So they will, if they hopefully will have enough kids next year.
Ms. Hood.
At the elementary school, we're rolling along. We're finishing up our second round of NC check-ins. And teachers will be using that data to inform their instruction for this last leg of the school year to get us prepared for integrated testing, which will be right around the corner. We have a new math coach at the elementary school, Cody Williams, and Shay Mullenax has taken over Crystal Buchanan's position as our literacy coach since Crystal Buchanan got the new position with DPI. Both Cody Williams and Shay Mullenax have settled into their new positions and they're both doing very well. I think that they'll both add a lot in those positions and we're really pleased with things that they're doing for our teachers in reading and math. I want to talk about the fifth grade trip that's coming up, the Charleston trip. It's going to be the Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday before spring break. Tonight is our mandatory parent meeting. We're going to have it auditorium at 5:30. And that's where we'll go over, you know, all the details with parents and we'll get the required signature pages and things like that done tonight. But right now we have thirty-six students that are going and sixteen staff and parents for a total of fifty-two individuals. So it's a good group this year. Everybody's looking forward to that. And so that's happening this afternoon. And the last week of March is going to be our annual Rock and Read at the elementary school. So what we have going on.
Did I see Ms. Walsh back there?
Thank you.
Your name.
Good morning. Middle school also is just moving along. We've completed our NC check-ins last week. I met with the math department yesterday and Crystal White and we kind of have a plan on what we need to do to finish up the school year before the integrated test. Beginning with the reading department tomorrow, we use the database on those check-ins to kind of look and see where the kids are and where we need to, what we need to accomplish before school's out. Report cards will go home next week. We will also be doing our R.I.A. assessments next week. Those will happen in math and reading. Athletics is gearing up. We had our first practice meet yesterday. We are waiting on official scores from Cherokee Schools. But it looks like that we may have had two or three school records broken yesterday. So the kids have been really excited looking at the board in the hall this morning, waiting for those big posted that Mr. Nellens is waiting for, the official scores. We also experienced some leaks in the new building, in the roof. The contractor did tell us before he left, he said, "You're going to have some problems as you always do in a new building." They have been very responsive and when we called them, they have come that day. And so what they found out, they had the roofing people there and they found out that the leak was coming from around the heating and air units that were up on the roof. And denture heating and air was there yesterday and did some repairs. And so they have been very responsive in making sure that those are fixed appropriately. So we're very pleased with their response time. We have two new teachers that have started and kind of getting in the swing of things. We have Tucker Cape who moved in in seventh grade math. He's doing a fantastic job. Crystal White has been wonderful helping him. They've been doing a lot of team teaching and she's really working with him on the curriculum and on pacing. And so he's doing a great job. And then Lynn Lynn moved over from the elementary and she's doing a great job. She's a seasoned teacher and so we support her very well and she knew a lot of the kids coming in. So she has done great. Our first baseball games will be next week, a week from today, and we will play at that time. And then eighth grade trip, it looks like that we are going to get to go. We have thirty-nine students that are donating. We have nine adults for a total of forty-eight people. We have been very fortunate with some people in the community that have made donations to make it possible for some of the kids to go. And I was real curious. I got a couple of donations in the mail with really nice letters. One stating that they wouldn't have got to go on their seniorship if somebody in the community hadn't paid for it. And then someone else, you know, said that they were very fortunate to have attended Graham County Schools, that they got a great education, had a wonderful job that they wanted to give back. So it's always nice when you get those little notes and donations. So we're really excited about that. Mr. Nellens is going to be going with the group instead of myself because we didn't have enough men because we don't have a lot of men teachers. And so Mr. Nellens and Jake Beasley and Tucker Cape will be the men that are going. So we're excited. We've got a good time.
Ms. Park.
Hey. So after school is going good this year. We've started a few new things. In the elementary, we started some EOG prep. In the middle school, we've started a new interventions program. So the kids are selected for this program by their teachers. So during the tutor sessions, the students are introduced to what they will be learning in class next week. So it gets those kids ahead of the hand, ahead of the game. So it fills those gaps. Since we're not just academic, our high school, Ms. Buchanan, has started giving workouts Mondays and Wednesdays. And we're going to be participating in science night and Rock and Read.
Ed, glad to have you with us.
Nice. Thank you, sir.
Go ahead.
Good morning, school board and everybody else. I left a pamphlet of the Graham County Indian Education Program with which I'm the manager of the program. And it just gives a brief overview of the staff members, the contacts, and what their positions are and what they do within the school system. Any of you have any questions, you can contact me or just come down to our facility just right down here across from the old band room. I know, I know most of you already know this, but I need to refute it. Probably wasn't familiar. That's why I brought the pamphlets. Plus, the pamphlets have changed some. Some of the staff has changed. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that up to you and also thank the entire school system, administrators, you guys, the superintendent. I realize things don't always run as smoothly as with life, but we are working on that. I've got work for my director that he is working to try to get some, with what's ever been one's permission, try to get some more staff before we can actually help the enrolled students plus the school system to better serve the students. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that before the board and apologize for not being here any more than I have. You know, there's different things been going on. I told you one time when I could make it, but anyway, I'll try to be here more consistently. So if we have a license to do this, thank you all, thank the school administration and the school system for allowing us to be here and be a part of the Graham County school system.
Thank you, Ms. Delano. Ms. Pre, do you have anything for us?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I wasn't prepared to answer. We are having a chocolate festival on April the first. We're having a chocolate tasting. Those proceeds are going to go to the Knights. And we have venues that are going to be set up as well as two seedings in the commons area of the high school. Tickets are twenty dollars and we are excited and looking forward to having a good time eating lots of chocolate. That's when April first? April first. It's a Saturday. It's from ten to two. You can see Ms. Wiggins for tickets. I had a new packet for later.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Ms. Wiggins.
Good morning. It's good to see all of you this morning. I'm like Mr. Ed and just gave you a bit. I'm not seeing you in two months with a lot of jury duty. That sort of take away from the warnings. But I do have some data here for you to look at. This is something that we try to be very conscientious to provide to you. This is data from social workers, nurses, counselors, on amounts for the students that they've been able to respond to and there's specifically take a look at that. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer those for you. You will see the social work data first, then you'll see counseling, and then in the back you'll see nurse data that allows you to see how many lots we've been able to touch over the last month. In attendance with me today, I have some very important ladies. I've got Ms. Georgia Welch, who is our school day specialist. She hired her last month in January. She's doing a remarkable job at our elementary campus and I'm going to have her give you a quick attendance update and we'll move on.
I just wanted to share with the school board, yesterday, Latisha and I had the privilege to work with Pikes and Greta. So I really appreciate the school allowing us to work with Pikes. But one of her workers, Patrick, is doing our attendance mediation. So we had Patrick come over. We met with the guardian of the child. He's like the neutral party. So it takes the parents, you know, looking at the school as we're going to take them to court. This is a bad thing. He's a neutral party. He tries to work with the family to keep them out of the court system and for a petition to be filed. And it was such a success. The parent or the guardian actually already called me this morning just to say that the child came to school. There wasn't any problems and that, you know, it was such a smooth transition. We put in a plan to help this child get to school every day for the parent to make it easier for her to get to work. So I really appreciate the school board allowing Pikes to work with the district. So I appreciate it and I know that Latisha and Katrina will be sending Patrick again. But this was our first case and the first time Patrick came over. So I really wanted to share the success that we had yesterday. So it was awesome. I really appreciate it.
We also have Katrina Almira, who is a social worker for the middle school and high school. And she's going to give you an update on some pretty substantial numbers, some cash flow that we have had come through.
So January twentieth, Mr. Madison came to me and said that our Knights pantry account was getting very low. And I was usually focused more on the caregiver account. And so I was like, okay, y'all, see what I can do. So I made, I don't know, probably like forty phone calls that day. And that was on a Friday. And then by Monday, we had five thousand dollars in. And then within two weeks, we had ten thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars with a total balance now of fourteen thousand.
That's amazing.
We also have Ms. Freda Metcalf here with us, run HOTS. She's going to be available during post sessions. You talk to any principals or administrators who might have questions about how you're taking to rely on attendance procedures, just so that we are able to go through contacts with families. I think it's one of the conditions that if we can keep situations out of court, that's our goal. And it's not to be able to partner with HOTS to be able to influence some of these things for families. So I would open Ms. Freda Metcalf. If you have any questions, she'll be available for you to ask.
Mara, you have anything for us?
No, I think I want to show more good to our listeners right now.
Ms. Wiggins, do you have anything?
Hi, good to you. Good to see you all. We've been, with your help, we've been working a lot with professional development. We have Ms. Keener, who is part of the Education Policy Fellowship Program. She will be going to DC to represent our district. We have the RTLN, which is a rural teacher learning network. We have three of our teachers who've been participating in that. And they've said it's a wonderful program. They're glad they signed up. We've had the Thinking Maths Program for the middle school. Ms. Walsh has attended and also eight teachers from the middle school. And we paid for their substitutes and been really glad to send them to that successful program. I have been part of the My Future NC Fast Book Planet. And we've made great progress on coming up with activities for our students. We are offering, we're offering tickets to prom. We're offering air buds where they can be to drawing for that. We're offering for the parents who help fill out the FASPA that they will get a cap and gown and castle package with that way that we are rattle, okay, and pull for that. So that's coming along well. I got the approval for the funding. We are working on our science night coming up. We hope to help with that. I am right now working on a justification to help with the eighth grade trip for charter bus and for meals at colleges that we stop at. We are getting ready for our Math One Riptide, which is Foundations of Math and Math One. That'll be a professional development for those teachers. There's three of those who've agreed to sign up. Let's see. I have so much written down. I'm taking the sixth grade to Western on a college visit and to their museum on March thirtieth. And then we're planning a cap save trip for all the STEM classes to go to a big STEM expo in April. So things are rolling now. January's a little slower month. February picked up and we're on roll.
Did I miss anybody? Okay. Ms. Densel, you're up next. Masking in schools.
All right. You know y'all tired of hearing this. And as soon as I go through my list, I'll stop talking about it. So I'm going to read this and then just point to some stuff. All right. So let me explain why I wrote a mask in January and I didn't really get to tell you why. So I'm going to speak about that now. This should take about thirty-five minutes by top of the desk. So six masks total, five kids, one adult went off to University of Florida's research lab. And I have their information down on this chart in the book. Anyway, they were clean masks. They wore five to seven hours and they just wanted to know what was in the masks. So we're just wondering what's in the mask. The Town Hall article where I got this from said there's two kinds of pneumonia. One is a blood infection type, sepsis, strep, meningitis, diphtheria, food poisoning, Lyme disease, TB, and more. Eleven things were found in six clean masks and one hundred percent of them were contaminated with something. And this list out here, it's got the whole rundown and I can pass that on for anybody that cares about looking at it. This list of contagious, it's just a few of the things that can form in a mask. Many of them are highly contagious. So the last thing I'm on the school grounds is something contagious. That's why I said ban. And also, you may wonder how this stuff can get in a mask. Well, masks are actually used to keep from spitting in a wound. So it gets wet and becomes a Petri dish and it forms bacteria pathogens and biologicals and that causes all this stuff in there. So I'm not telling children not to wear masks. I'm just saying, this is what's in the mask. And I wanted you to know the information about it. And take note, if all this stuff is in a mask during 2020 and 2021, can you believe we're not all dead? I mean, that has a testimony to an immune system concordance. That's just a nugget. So of note, Steve DePatty, who is my hero right now, an industrial hygienist, he says that masks do not work and a mask box says the same thing. Does it protect from COVID? It says right on it what it protects and it's nothing sickness or disease. It's actually we're protecting you from spitting in a wound. And that's important because Christine Kelly and other industrial hygienists said it's poisoning children to the tune of twenty percent carbon dioxide. I could never participate in that. So again, why I had to ban masks is because of that. And my motion to ban masks and this important information that I just gave you is protecting me legally, morally, and ethically. So I just want you to know, Christine Kelly, she is a court credentialed industrial hygienist. And she wants to go to court. She wants to take us to court, court school boards and low companies and things like that. So I just want to put this information out so that we're all informed. Can't make a good decision without being informed. So let's see. The Town Hall article that I got this from, I can send that to you guys, anybody that's interested in it. I want you to know I've done my job as a school board member. My loyalty is to the Constitution. So I just did the research and I questioned the government and this is what I came up with. So you can also ask me for lab information from the lab, the University of Florida lab. I corresponded with her, make sure this was true. And she emailed me back three hours later and said, "It is their information and it is accurate." So you've gotten, you've gotten a whole picture of masking now. And if you want any of the information on anything, just contact me and I'll give it to you back already at our office. So I'm done with masking. That's all I had to say on that. We're going to move on to medical.
Go ahead and go to medical services.
School-based medical clinic. So I'm new on this. This is going to hear for a year. It's going to come up and made the contract and I haven't heard anything else about that. When I emailed you about that. So I'm just, I'm assuming that it's either going to renew or it's not going to be in this.
So the actual contract is a ongoing contract that we will reaffirm it in April for me. But really, it's a reaffirmation because it's a give, back, and back out of contract on April seventh in thirty days. And that is, there is a conclusion of the contract.
Yeah, okay. That sounds all right. Okay. So what do I think about the clinic, obviously, from that board? Or when you be bringing it up? And I'm going to give you about six to eight minutes and it's actually already started. That was part of talking to you about that. I'm going to move on to why I don't, I don't like the clinic. I do. I've only heard good things. I've heard everything good from, from leadership and from all the people that are using it. I mean, I've heard, just hear nothing but good. And I agree it is good. I don't have any problem with that. But are there any cons? And you know, I want to hear both because I'm a school board member. I need to know it all. So I've done my own, you know, thinking on this. Of course, God let me do a couple things. Constitution. What's the Constitution think about something like this? We're marrying a medical and a school together in one place. That's consolidating power. That's communistic behavior. You want to keep things separate. You know this because our government's separate. Everything's kept separate. So I don't like the medical on their property for that reason. And also, the parents' rights become eroded when things get too big and you can't control them. And also, lines become blurred where now medical starts to talk to the school. We're school. They're medical. We should just keep it separate, in my opinion. And so, you know, with the Constitution, I believe that's, that's consistent with what the Constitution would want, keep things separate. So number two, I have three reasons, by the way, that I, that I believe that the medical center is not a good idea. And number two is, I took a tour with Mrs. Nice at the school. Let me just say, everything is fabulous. I can't believe all the opportunities our kids have, both if they're going to college or if they're staying or they're just going out to the world. It's unbelievable what you guys are offering. I mean, I was so impressed. You know, I already told you several times. I was just freaking out. I did not know all this stuff was in there. And it's just a wonderful opportunity and I love it. And I just, everybody, board members, everybody should take some credit for that. So anyway, that was ending in the fourth and fifth grade hall. The tour ended right over there in that building over there. And we came out in the exact time the kids were running out of school. It was wild, loud and everything. But anyway, we're standing there talking with some of the people that were overseeing that. And I noticed a child on the outside of the door wearing a mask. And I'm not going to get upset at it here, but I just, I always just cry. I kind of cry in my spirit and I pray for it. And I just shut up. I just go on and that's what I did then too. Well, next thing I know, I hear they're going to come into the school-based medical clinic. Oh, my gosh. We're going to let this child in this, in the building? Well, I've been studying viruses since 2020. So if there's a virus in that mask, we're about to be exposed. And that includes me. Everybody in the hall is about to be exposed, whatever is going on with this child's body. But let alone what's in this mask. We're going to have some strep. We're going to have meningitis, which are things that have been happening here. I don't know, but I know it can happen. But I kept my mouth shut because that's none of my business right now. I'm just burst into this stuff for, for the first time. But I want you to know that that is, to me, a dangerous thing. And it's dangerous when it comes on the property. And then I seen the little child sitting on the outside of it. Medical clinic. He didn't even come in and go in the medical clinic. I didn't see where he came in because it was so much stuff going on. He's sitting on the outside of the medical. Now, I know what that virus can do. If there's a virus, any kind of virus, it's four thousand times smaller than a hair. It's aerosols. It floats to the air and it would just be a plume. Just everywhere you went, it would be a plume. So there was, again, nothing I could do about it. But sadly, no one knew what was going on. So this became to me a class one event and I got class four on this board. I wanted to be good for you, good for me, good for others, good for the greater good. Good for you, good for me, good for others, good for the greater good. That medical clinic is a class one. And let me tell you why. Obviously, the clinic is good for use. It's not good for me. And I'm going to tell you why. It's not good for others for the same reason because people can be contaminated with the stuff that came through the door. But what about the greater good? It's not good for that either. And let me tell you why. I have appointments with my husband for doctor. If I am exposed to anything, when they call me about two or three days ahead of time with appointment, they say, "Don't come." So that means I got rescheduled. I was subjected to that, but nothing come up. It didn't hurt anything. But I just want you to consider these things. When we're considering this medical clinic, I want you to consider these things. So anyway, it was, it was, you know, just kind of open to anybody. The same thing that happened with my doctor appointment could happen to anybody and anybody's children taking this stuff home. So that's just what I want you to know about that. The reason doctors' offices and hospitals told us not to come is because they don't want to spread it. I don't want anything spread on our property. That's why I don't want a lot of school property myself. It seems logical. We don't want people to get sick. So I want you to understand the blurred lines. Blurred lines, my mask is so dark. Blurred lines happen like the Constitution said. This is happening. Medical is getting into the school system. And I was handed this document when I came here, I think it was January third meeting. And it says on here, "To promote vaccines." I'm not a medical person. I don't know why I would be giving that because I couldn't tell anybody to go get a vaccine. I'm not medical. I don't have a license and I don't believe anybody in here is licensed to do medical. So when I see the CDC guidelines telling us to do it, I know the lines become blurred. And now we're not talking about just academic. We're talking about sickness and disease. I'm going to give you one ingredient that's in that vaccine, SM102. S, Sam, S, M, Mary, 102. Go look up this data sheet. It's what it is. It's a data sheet. It's what's in the vaccines. This is why I don't want to give information about medical out on the school property. This is dangerous stuff. End note, I didn't know. I thought it was fourteen-year-olds. Twelve-year-olds, twelve to seventeen, can go get a shot on their own. Who wants to be the person to recommend the shot to a child that go get their own shot because they can't? We're influencers. So as you can see, the lines are blurred. But I'm about to give you another one, okay? Medical is run by pharmaceutical. What's the word of pharmaceutical? Pharmakea. If you look up pharmakea, evil concoctions, potions, and sorcery. And then you can go to Revelations 1123 and see what it has to say about it. And by the way, every medical thing has a symbol. It's a snake. A snake. That's, that's my, that's my spiritual end of that. Because I am, I may be a board member, but I'm still a child of Moses, thank God. And I know what this stuff is doing and I must say, I must say something, you know? Or I would just be a contact hypocrite. So that's it. Now you know the rest of the story. That's why I nodded Paul Harding. And now, you know, we just have discussion. I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Densel.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Budget amendments. Mr. Green.
Okay. In your packet, I've given you two packets. First one there are budget amendments and those are stapled together. They are eight and a half by eleven sheets. Ms. Densel, I want to mention something real quick again, since you're a new board member. If you'll scan down that first page, under the description of code, this is just a reminder. The second line there where it says revenue, state public school fund. All right. You'll see a figure there just to the right under the debit column. If you see a debit, a career debit or a figure in the debit column, that's a reduction of our revenue or a reduction of our allotment. It's in the credit side and that's an increase. So I'm just going to go through these quickly. They're not terribly significant. I wasn't here in February, so I've got a few more budget amendments than I usually have. So I'm going to go through these quickly, but you know, stop me anytime you have a question. Feel free to do that. The first section here, these are budget amendments to the state public school fund. First budget amendment is BRC 16. That's summer reading camps. There's a reduction in allotment there of eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and six cents. Those were funds that were unspent from last summer school. So DPI would pull those out of our budget. And then when June gets here, they'll realot those with an additional allot added to that. Okay. The rest of the budget amendments on the page, these are all reductions. It's in relation to DPI, looking at two items. One would be the average daily attendance. And if we, if our average daily attendance goes down, then they'll reduce our allot somewhat because of that. And they also make a small reduction to help fund the charter. And they also make a small reduction to help fund the charter schools. They'll do that in the first half of the year. So these budget amendments are affected by those two facts. So the first section there, second section down, PRC 130. This is textbooks. We received a reduction of $678. Next section down is PRC 001, classroom teachers. Reduction there is $37,661. Next section down is PRC 003, instructional support. Reduction there is $6,550. Next section down is PRC 14, career and technical education. Reduction there is $115 and reducing the amount budgeted for supplies. The last section is PRC 78, digital learning. That's why I get a laugh out of this. Reduction there is 3 cents. No, the only one that's credited back was the top one for summer school.
Why do you have these credits?
Those credits are reducing the budgeted amount within that program reporting. Go ahead.
Now, the one up at the top, you said we're gonna get back the $8,696.06.
That and allotment in addition to that.
Okay, why was that not spent? Did we just gonna have some tutors or?
Well, you know, it's hard to figure out how many tutors you're gonna need during summer school. And usually during summer school, we've got eight to 10 different funding sources. So it's not that we're losing the funding. We just didn't spend it. So they're pulling it back out of our budget for this fiscal year, for the last summer. And then they'll add it back probably in June or May. So that we can use those funds and an additional allotment on top of that for this coming summer. Okay, next page. These are also budget amendments to the state public school fund. First section there is PRC 61, classroom materials. The reduction there is $629. And the principals are aware of these reductions. We give an allotment. All of those funds are distributed to the individual schools for classroom materials based on formula. So if there's a reduction in that formula, it has to be used and that has to be reduced regularly based on that formula. And the principals, I gave them their allotments or their balances yesterday. So they're aware of what the remaining balances are for that particular PRC. Next section down is budget revision for PRCs 13 and 14. This is career and technical education. This is an ABC transfer and it's not a reduction in funding. We're simply moving funds between two PRCs. PRC 13 is funded by months of employment. And we make this transfer every year because of the months of employment that the state gives us greater than the months of employment we need for the staff within the career and technical education program. So we reallocate those funds over to PRC 14 to be used for items like supplies, materials, equipment, workshops, things of that nature. But the transfer is $9,126. Next section down is PRC 46. This is the third grade read-to-achieve bonus. The amount there for those bonuses is $4,102. And that includes the social security to go with that bonus. Next section is PRC 48, principal performance bonuses. That amount there is, the allotment is $1,246. And again, those are for bonuses and there's some social security included with that. Next section down is PRC 15, school technology fund. The increase in the allotment there is $407, planned to use after supplies and materials. End of the budget amendments for the state public school fund. Next page, these are budget amendments to federal fund. First section there, PRC 17, vocational education. We receive an additional allotment of $1,922. And the majority of that will be used for supplies. Next section down is PRC 119, IDEA preschool part B. The allotment for the year there is $2,032.63. And we'd be using the majority of that for workshop expense. And the last budget amendment on this page is for PRC 17 again. This is just reallocation, allocation of budget funds. We're taking the budget amount out of supplies, $9,131, and plan to use after software and modern capitalizing equipment. Next page is budget amendments for Fund 8. And this is the fund where we account for individual grants that we receive. First section there is PRC 671. This is the SHAC grant. This is a new grant, $60,000. Those funds have to be expended by June 30. And Ms. Wiggins, if you could give a brief description of what this stands for, how those funds are being expended, please.
So we were very fortunate to be able to have these funds. And essentially, what we have done is we have tried to create a, or an outline of how we would like to assist both students and staff members. We have attempted to try to break out some training and development for social workers and counselors. We have also created a plot of money for employee wellness to try to incentivize some things for staff burnout so that we can keep the teachers and to give them something to look forward to. We've also, in this same SHAC grant, created a section for nutrition environment and nutrition services. We've tried to arrange some things on our physical environments, our playgrounds, to update some equipment for children. And then lastly, we have tried to earmark some money for some family engagement opportunities such as time it's not. And we have looked at those some things, perhaps with the High School for Animal Day. We've looked at perhaps a wellness fair. So all of those things are earmarked with just various dollars to try to offset the $60,000 that Mr. Green was just sharing with you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiggins. Next section down is PRC 670. The title for this grant, we've already spoken about this, is a K-12 COVID testing grant. That's just the title. And we're, we've reallocated some funds within this grant. There's no increase or decrease of funding. Supplies and materials that we have budgeted, we're reallocating $41,035. We'll use that for the nursing assistance, help with our system. Next section, uh, next page. These, the last two pages are budget amendments for a GEAR Up grant. The first page, there are some sizable numbers there, but don't pay attention to that so much. A fact about the GEAR Up grant, the grant year of this grant overlaps with our fiscal year. Our fiscal year is July 1 through June 30. But the GEAR Up grant, that grant year is October 1 through September 30. So it overlaps. So we've got three months of expenditures there, budget expenditures. We have to clear last year's budget out. So this budget amendment for GEAR Up on this page is to simply clear out budget expenditures and one revenue line item for last year's budget. Now, the next page is a budget amendment for GEAR Up for this fiscal year. So the new amount of funding that we receive for GEAR Up is $171,500. And those funds, again, can be spent going forward until September the 30th. And those items, those funds are used for GEAR Coordinator benefits, tutors, substitutes, benefits associated with that, field trips, contracted transportation, supply materials, workshop expense, paintball supplies. So do you have any questions about budgets? I know that was locked. I was, I wasn't here last month. I was a little bit nervous. I usually present.
Do I have a motion to accept the budget amendments as presented by Mr. Green? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed?
Okay, now we can present the expenditure awards. Ms. Denchel, this is new to you. The first page, these are expenditures for all of our funds within our school system. And I'll not go to the first page in a lot of detail, but I will mention the top column there, a row as you go across. You'll see there's a title for each fund within our school system. And again, you can scan down to the bottom and that'll be the total expenditures just for the month of February for each fund. And what I'd like to do is go over the second page, expenditures for the year, year-to-date. If you'll scan to the bottom there, the last three rows, you'll notice there that there are some percentages there. And to this point in the year, I'd like to mention whether we're over budgeted or under budgeted on each individual fund. So the first fund there is local current expense fund. We're over budgeted by 38%. And that's simply because we like to expand the county's funding first. And we do have a couple of expenditures, projects that we've paid for out of this fund where we're gonna get reversals. So it appears that we're over budgeted greater than what we are. So once we get those reversals, that percentage will, will drop.
The reverse from the county?
No, it's not from the county. We've got some HPAC and some expenditure for the sixth grade lean that we made out of our local funds that we'll get back from Department of Public Instruction. Next column over is Fund 8, where we account for individual grants. We're under budgeted by 9%. State public school fund, we're over budgeted by 6%. Next section over is next row, column, federal fund. We're under budgeted by 25%. Child nutrition is under budgeted by 16. Capitalization is under budgeted by 56%. And then your last page, there's a report there that has all of the individual, not all, but the majority of the individual grants that we account for in Fund 8. So that report, list of grants, the expenditures for February, expenditures year-to-date, and then the total budget for each year. And that's not, that's not anything that you need to, by the way, that's just a expenditure report.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
More questions?
Ms. Walsh, MOA with the Kittlewood Academy.
Yes, you should have a copy of that in your packet that Ms. Knight sent home. This pertains to athletics. In order to participate in one of our athletic teams or on a sports, you have to be an enrolled member of Grand County Schools. And that is not an issue until we just ran into one. And that is with cheerleading. And most of the time, it will be with cheerleading. And that's because even though sport does not start until August, they have tryouts here in the spring because they do camps in the summer and raise money and those kind of things. And so we do have some students from Grand County that are Grand County residents that are living in the Snowbird community that attend the Kittlewood School Academy in Cherokee, which is their language and marketing school. And so this memorandum of understanding would allow those students to try out in the spring, although they are not enrolled in Grand County schools, with the understanding that in order for them, if they were to make the team, in order for them to participate, they would have to be enrolled. And so that's, the memorandum of understanding had the only thing that it asked of the Kittlewood Academy is that they provide us with the same documentation that we have to have for all students, which would be grades, attendance, and discipline records. And that they would, you know, work with us to make sure that any students from the Snowbird community knew about tryouts and those kind of things. We do have a student this year and we will have some in the future. Their program only goes through the sixth grade. So when they finish the sixth grade, they will come back to Broadstone Middle School. And so this is asking for this agreement to be approved. And it will be, you know, could pertain to cross-country possibly, but mostly it's always gonna be cheerleading.
So Kittlewood Academy also has a same grant, actually I almost worked a word with Swain County Schools, who has similar circumstances with them.
I didn't hear you mention physicals.
So in there, it does say that they would provide us with a copy of a student's physical if they have one. And talking with Kylie Schuler, they really don't have, because they don't do athletics, they really don't have a copy of the physical. So that would, that would be up to the parents to provide those.
It's a requirement anyway.
It is a requirement. So they can try and they have to have those.
So this would just pertain to sixth graders, the way I understand.
It would, well, it would, rising seventh graders. But because it's, when they get into sixth grade, they can try out for JV cheerleading. And it's kind of confusing because middle school, our athletics are guided by the Department of Public Instruction. High school falls under the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. But because of middle school, they can play JV football and cheer for the JVs. There's a little gray area there. So we just, what we've been told by both the DPI and the High School Athletic Association is that boards can have, let's see, rules that are not as strict, or rules that are strict.
Stronger, but not as, they have to at least meet their guideline. We can have a stricter rule, but not one that's.
Less strict.
Now, that would also involve basketball and track.
Well, it should not involve those because those students should already be enrolled because they have tryouts through, like, through the school year. Cheerleading always is their tryouts the prior, like, we're doing tryouts. Like, they're doing tryouts this week for next year. So it's mostly just cheerleading. Sometimes they do practice at the end of the summer with cross-country. But by that time, they would be enrolled. Because those students can enroll as soon as their school dismisses them.
And that's what's having to happen. She's having to wait until her school gets out or his go, whatever. Or her school gets out until she can enroll.
Enroll. Because she wants to complete that language program. And, you know, this, this M O U is just between Grand County Schools and the Kittlewood School. It does not, it's not any other agencies or schools or private schools, anything like that. It's just between these students. And that's being respectful of our, our native community.
So Kittlewood Academy is the language marketing school. And so it's unique. And I think it would, you know, for, for enrolled members, it helps them continue their language. And we certainly want to support that. But I would recommend that, my recommendation is that you support this M O A.
And we met, Mr. Maddison, DeWash, myself, we met with the parents. And we just kind of felt like that instead of, you know, try, parents trying to bend the rules, that we needed to come up with a solution. So it would be consistent across the board. So I think this is a good answer to that.
Well, this also helps children get, you know, enrolled in school and get involved in something. Because that's really good for their mental health is to start that, you know, being able to participate in things.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Do I have a motion to approve the MOA with the Kittlewood Academy as presented by Ms. Walsh?
I make my motion that we, we, okay. It is, I understand that what Kittlewood's, I have.
Do I have a second?
Yes, I agree.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, field trip approved. I have one. Okay, Mr. Maddison.
So we got a field trip coming up on March 33rd. It'll be for A10 Project Discovery students. Project Discovery is a group that comes to the high school through Western Carolina University. G. D. Sorrells is the director of that group. And she's actually the counselor that comes to our school. And they will be taking a trip to Appalachian State University on March 31st. It's an overnight trip. It will be chaperoned by Project Discovery staff. And all lodging meals are included in this for our students with something we've done in the past. So we're asking to approve this overnight trip to Appalachian.
How many students are going to be?
Eight to 10.
Eight to 10?
Eight to 10 students.
Do I have a motion to approve the field trip to Appalachian State University for Project Discovery? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Any more field trips?
I have a trip also. And this trip is sponsored by.
I have a trip also, and this trip is sponsored by Project Discovery out of Western Carolina University, and this is a trip that we do every year. It's an overnight trip, and it would be on the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth of April. They take students to Lake Logan Episcopal Center in Camp North Carolina. The trip is for seventh and eighth grade Project Discovery students, which is approximately forty students. And they do an annual overnight camping trip, where students will participate in activities such as canoeing, hiking, mountain hiking, climbing on an Alpine Tower. We do have parental permission and releases from parents. Erin Goodpastor, which is a former graduate of Robbinsville High School, she is the outreach counselor, and then we also, they also have about, one, two, three, four, five other chaperones from Western Carolina University, and Joanne Knight would be our bus driver and accompany our kids to stay the night with them.
And this is at Lake Logan in Canton?
Lake Logan in Canton.
Do I have a motion to approve the field trip for the seventh and eighth grade April, excuse me, April twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth to Lake Logan in Canton?
Absolutely.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Are there any others?
Yes, we have a field trip request for our third grade. They want to take their annual trip to Young Harris College, to the Planetarium, just across the state line in Georgia. It's April the fourth, and of course, they will leave after buses arrive in the morning and be back by bus time for the kids to go home, so it won't be anything outside of the regular school day, but it is across state lines. And this correlates with their reading and science unit on space.
Is that Planetarium? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the third grade trip to Young Harris College at the Planetarium on April fourth?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Any opposed? Are there others? Mr. White, summer retesting policy.
Good morning. Before I get into this, I'm going to give you a quick update on the accountability testing program. Now, you've already heard from several of the principals, but I don't know if you've noticed me looking at my phone over and over this morning, but, you know, we do have ACT going on at high school, and so I've been checking to make sure I'm not even there. So that hopefully is going well, not had any calls, so I'm assuming it's going well. Also, the check-ins, the teachers or the principals have missed too, but we're finishing up the second round of check-ins, and so hopefully those will be around. I believe we lined those up this week. Also, as I mentioned last month, with access testing for our English language learners, actually, we just tested our last student this morning, and so we're right now finishing that up. So we're, we're, we're busy. We're busy, we're, we're staying busy with the summer, which is what we're starting with the testing program. Of course, it won't be very long until we'll start putting out EOCs and EOGs, trying to make sure that everybody is enrolled in the testing platform like they should be, and so that's going to be pretty quick. But that's just a quick, a quick little update on what's going on with testing. As far as the, the, the summer program plan that I'm hopefully adjung before today, this is nothing new. This is something that I have to bring to you every year. We have to approve how we're going to try to retest our students if, if they so choose to do so. But in the, in the summer retesting program, there are three ways that a student can participate in the retest. The first one is by repeating elements of the course, which is basically what we would call remediation. This is for students that have passed the course, but maybe didn't score provision on the test and would lack opportunity to retest. And so that's, that's one way. The other two ways is either credit recovery or repeating a whole course. And with credit recovery and repeating the whole course, that's for students that have failed the course for the year. Now, with credit recovery, basically, what would happen is that a subset of the standards would be rehauled to the students, and then they would be retested. Of course, with repeating the whole course, would basically redo a whole course in the summer. Now, remember, with the accountability program, it has to be finished up for this school year by July sixth. And so with that being said, we have chosen two of those to participate here this year. The first one of course is remediation, for those students that have passed the course but would like opportunity to repeat the test, and also for credit recovery by reteaching a subset of the standards. Really repeating the whole course, that would be very difficult, very time constraints there, to try to get a whole course hauled again before July sixth. So with that being said, all summer program, all this that I've mentioned to you here, all summer program activities must occur outside of the regular academic year. So in other words, we have to wait until the last student day before we can begin any of these programs. The last student day is May the twenty-sixth of this year. So this is the kind of plan that the principals and I, Ms. Knight, we've all talked about and come up with, that I'm hoping that the board will approve before I can submit to the EPI by next week. So for, as far as the remediation element there, where these, again, this is for students that have passed the course, would like opportunity to repeat the test, if they weren't participating. We plan on starting the remediation, and I remember the last eight students, the twenty-sixth, we'd like to start remediation on May the thirtieth, and we'd have opportunities for students to attend remediation. We'd like for the students to at least get four hours of remediation before they would retest. The retesting dates would start on May the thirty-first, and I forgot to mention this, but the remediation dates, the dates that we would have are May thirtieth through June the second, and then the testing dates will be May thirty-first through June sixth. And so that gives us an opportunity to remediate, and then when we remediate, we can start testing. And then as far as the second option that we chose, the, the credit recovery, again, this is for, for students that may have failed the course, we would start that program on June the twelfth, and again, they would repeat a subset of the standards, hauled in question. For this, this retention will run for eight days, for six hours per day, and after these eight days, the students will have opportunity to retest, and those testing dates would be June twenty-second to June twenty-third. And so that is our plan for retesting for the EOGs and EOCs, and so again, I hope that the board will take this and approve this. If so, I do have a paper that I will leave the board chair, Ms. Knight, to sign, before I can submit to the EPI.
Anybody got any questions before I ask for the vote? Do I have a motion to approve the summer retesting policy as presented by Mr. White? Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Ken. Yes, sir. Personnel, Ms. Knight?
I'll bring a host of names to you during the first session that you'll be going on when you're back up. Go to the session.
You said a host of names? A host of names?
It's been, that pattern has been consistent this year. Every now and then we've had a change in personnel, so I'm afraid that's a sign of the times, with education right now.
Ms. Davis?
All right.
Board policies.
We need to be thankful we're going to address three of them. On the first reading is policy thirty-two, twenty-six, internet safety. It's ground new, and I want, if the board would, under adoption of policy twenty-four, twenty, you can do a temporary approval on the first reading, and have a special condition. And that special condition is Mara Walton's first phone.
He might have others in Simba, and we're about to do it, so.
I'm just seeing how many people consider approving this one as a special condition, even if we have to revisit it later, but approving it.
Oh, it's the first reading.
Even if, yeah, today, on the first reading, you can approve it, and we'll put it on for, you still put it on the second reading, but go ahead and do temporary approvals, what your policy says. And it's, the temporary approvals for special, and then that's my reading is approved today.
I'm sure that was for, it's for Syphilis, it's from a safe for E-RAY, and even though our technology acceptable use policy covers all this, since it is part of the acceptable use policy, then we also have to have it get in place, even though you're basically saying the same thing, just in two different contexts.
And that's what I looked at, and I agree a hundred percent with my reading. Policy thirty, well, you need to do this. Policy thirty-two, twenty-five, which you want approved, is technology responsible use policy.
And we're going to revisit that one every year, so I think that's one situation.
And this is thirty-two, twenty-six, internet safety, and it repeats that your technology director implements policy thirty-two to twenty-five, which is what you've already approved as the responsible use policy. And the reason you need this, well, E-RAY, have you get any S and M? If you get any of the elementary, secondary education, you're supposed to have this policy as well, because it takes the same definitions from the Children's Internet Protection Act, and that's in the other one too. And that's why my recommendation is okay to approve this today, as Mara said, it is the same as the policy we already approved, it's just they wanted it in this format.
Okay, so I mean, we need to approve that.
Nothing has changed word-wise?
No.
Just the format?
In fact, what this says is the technology director to implement.
The technology acceptable use policy. Which was, that, that does our, that is said it's supposed to do, so I want you to do that, so.
And I read over it, and it's, it's good, I mean, it's.
Yeah, maybe it's a policy.
Okay, so on the other two, the forty-three, twenty-six, and I like this on the desk, this has the top, this is the top sheet to help with reviewing, okay? And the next one was, the first one was internet use. The second one is the student round drug testing, and Mr. Rudy went over this, and he recommended, you, you've approved this back in June of twenty-two, okay? But it's back on for first and second reading, because if you go to page four, it's highlighted.
Page four?
Page four. It's highlighted where the changes are, and there are the changes, and they're recommended by my colleague, Mr. Rudy, because of, hold on, what's needed by the drug testing company. Especially that selection and observation will be done by the drug testing company while your employees are present, that they're not part of the drug testing procedure and protocol. And it says superintendent or designated, so that's what is changed, while it's a nine-page policy that only changes on page four.
Do parents not sign, do parents not sign, I may have been out of waiver, but do they not sign something in the beginning of the sports that they will?
They do, this page only.
Yes.
But is this change, parents should sign a waiver agreeing their students could be banned from participation, is that not already in there? Is that not already in the policy? She said those were the changes that were highlighted. And it says down there, parents shall sign a waiver agreeing their student could be banned from participating in school activities. The waiver should be signed at the beginning of each school year.
That's nothing, that's not a change, the changes are the highlighted ones.
That's highlighted, isn't it?
Oh, sorry. It's not.
Highlighted, isn't it?
What, what page?
Four.
Page four.
Did you read on Caroline?
No.
You just got the special.
They refused to participate in that.
I might have read that, but I thought we already did that, but mine is highlighted.
If they refused, if they refused to make, to sign the drug test permission?
But, but that's not, but that's not a change, given that.
That is not a change. That, oh, yes.
Because I thought that had already been done.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Ms. Davis. I need a log in, I need a log in.
Hey.
She's got a initial.
That's your initial.
All right. Then on attendance, we were looking at attendance for first and second reading. If you go to, it's only for third reading, and the reason is, if you go to page two, it's highlighted. Hey, I was doing this, I was highlighting last night. I've got a new marker. Okay.
You really were highlighting mine.
That's good. That's good. Let's go to this page, page four. Okay, that's good, all right.
This is a first reading?
No, this is a third reading. Yeah. So what's highlighted, Mr. Rudy looked at the policy, and if you look at what's highlighted, that is changed in addition from the, we did the first reading and the second reading, but he called a couple of things on page two, did I say it? Page two.
These are the coordinates. Yeah, you said, yeah, page two.
Page two, okay. For excused absences, the changes in C, and then the change in three, and... I think the most critical, well, what's highlighted there are changes, but the point of these changes is that the written excuse from the doctor is provided to the school by the end of the present nine-week period. They've been rolling in, attendance has been an issue, and kids scrambling and saying it's excused, but what this does is that whatever nine-week period you're in, that's when.
In other words, they can't bring it in the next nine weeks.
The next nine weeks are May or April or September. So I think that what shores up and what's very different is it's in that nine weeks.
And just for myself, there's nothing in this policy that says that we accept a parent note as an excuse for an absence, that it's doctor's notes only.
No, the doctor's notes is the parent's responsibility to make or to give the doctor's notes, it's not our responsibility to go check.
Yes.
So it's my understanding, Ms. Davis, that we're to approve the first one and the third. Is that correct? The one on internet safety?
Yeah, the third reading.
And the attendance?
Right. And then what would be on for April is the internet again for the second reading.
You got a question, Ms. Davis?
Well, I've got a question on, on reasons for excuse to absence is number seven, participation. I just wondered who validates this. Participation in valid educational opportunities such as travel or services in legislation, legislative preparation for great education, for our approval from principal.
The principal is the one, they have to get that approved, and we're allowed by board policy, which was a couple of years ago, we can approve three educational days per student per year, and that's the max, so they can have three educational days.
Three educati, three days.
Three days that are excused for educational purposes.
And that also includes a religious, religious observances also. That three days can go for either one of those. So in other words, they have to come to you first.
Yes, ahead of time.
Ahead of time, any principal, ahead of time, and get permission.
Any principal, ahead of time, can get permission for that child to be absent or.
Well, the principal, the third child is.
Or an unexcused absence, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Very corrupt.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve policy number 3226 slash 4205, Internet Safety?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Now, do I have a motion to approve the third reading of policy number 4400, attendance?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Can I have a question to speak, Chairman? I think I read a mistake.
Yeah?
Last time we approved that packet, remember I talked to you this morning, I said we had it, the last packet, Ms. Davis, that you handed out to us, and we approved the whole packet except for one thing, like you said, chairman, one, that was attendance, I think. I made a mistake. I don't think that I should have approved two or three things in there, and I got the numbers for them. I made a mistake doing that. How do you want me to correct that? I had a lot of questions, and honestly, I didn't want to take up a bunch of time. I'm not sure exactly how it was going to get the answers. That moved quickly, and I felt I should shut up for a minute because we really don't know what I was talking about, because first and second and third reading, I don't, how do I get my questions answered if I like have, okay, I have a question. So bring up, you can take questions right in here at that time.
Well, for that particular one that you're.
It was the Parents Rights one, I had a bunch of questions. So can I say I don't approve it? I made a mistake with my, with my vote? Is that?
On which one?
It was on Parents Rights. I have a couple of them. Now I've got some pieces of paper, I'm going to go back through and find my own.
The policies haven't been approved.
Right. And these guys, four people agreed, so I think it should matter, right?
No, it doesn't matter.
I mean, we'll change that, but we, can she go back and resend the vote after the vote was made? That was a question I wanted. I believe the, as acceptable procedure went to be, requests certain policies would be reviewed again. They were voted on, they're approved, okay? Yes, you go back and resend your, but it has to be, you have to vote to amend your agenda today to add a vote on her wanting to resend. And then what's pretty technical, the question is, I think she could work with someone and have the questions answered about policy before we send him or before we put him back on the agenda.
Could it be put back on the agenda in the next meeting?
Not necessarily the next meeting, but they're already approved. Okay. But to address her questions first and then. If necessary, to put it back. On the agenda for review again and another vote would be my recommendation.
Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, print C's A, print C's three, and 143-318.11, print C's C, I move the Grand County Board of Education going to closed session to receive advice from Ms. Ellen Davis, Attorney for Grand County Board of Education, which advice comes within the review of the attorney-client privilege. This advice will be general legal advice about legal issues or legal matters. Pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, print C's C, I move that the Grand County Board of Education going to closed session for the purpose of considering personal matters as defined in and allowed by the North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, print C's A, print C's six, and the North Carolina General Statute
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Do you? You got it now to a side.
That's right.
Do I have a motion to accept the resignations of Jessica Ware and Stacy Carter?
So moved.
Second. Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
I recommend the position of Robbinsville High School bookkeeper and finance manager, Melina Adams.
Do I have a motion to approve Melina Adams as the high school bookkeeper and finance manager?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I recommend that you employ the position of elementary teacher, Robin Welker.
Do I have a motion to employ Robin Welker as a third-grade teacher?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I recommend that you employ the position of custodian, Bill Watkins.
Do I have a motion to employ Bill Watkins as an elementary custodian?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I recommend Jeremy Brown as a volunteer.
Do I have a motion to approve Jeremy Brown as a volunteer?
Yes, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
And I recommend Rhonda Davis as an instructional substitute.
Do I have a motion to approve Rhonda Davis as an instructional substitute? Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
I didn't miss anybody, principal, right? Okay, all right. Big list.
Are we done with that?
We are.
Are any announcements, Ms. Knight?
So your next Board of Education meeting will be April 4th at 10:00 a.m.
Will we have more training?
Uh, I don't.
No.
And then just for your information, I put in front of you some upcoming events, some of which we have mentioned, but I'll just briefly go over it. Science night, that is a parent engagement, family involvement activity on March 23rd. You have some handouts following that. There's a Big Brother, Big Sisters Bowl for Kids' Sake event coming up. That will be at Cherokee at Murphy at the Harris Casino over there, if you're interested. There's a sign-up sheet there. Elementary schools having Rock and Read Week, and there's a parent night for that. We have a Spring Fest coming up, which is, which Ms. Sunny mentioned, it's a chocolate tasting event, so some, I heard some of you go, mm, so I would expect that you will follow that up and go get a ticket. You can see Ms. Wiggins for that. Just to mention, our spring break is April 10th through the 14th, prom, May 6th, and then Mr. Mathissons already mentioned, our baccalaureate in regulation services.
Baccalaureate at, field to. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor? We are adjourned.